Good morning. It's eight thirty, and I'm calling Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We have two changes to it. We're going to move item twelve to the top of the agenda, and we're also going to add a request permission to partner with Clay Soil and Water Conservation District on Habitat Enhancement Landscape Pilot Grant. That will be added after it'll become item, or it will be handled after item five. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as described?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as described.
Second.
Have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens present who want to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? Do we have any citizens online? Steve?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Next on the agenda is approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
I'd love to pay the voucher.
Have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next is approval of minutes from June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Over.
Motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, next we will start with Darren Brooks, our H R director, who has got to go down and man the grills for our employee picnics, so we're going to get him out of here early.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for reminding everybody that today is the county picnic. It'll be on the south side of the Family Service Center, and from eleven-thirty to one o'clock, we have our world famous chef Kirk Cannon still cooking our hamburgers, so we're good there.
Chef and dancer.
Yeah, and so it's going to be a great day for that. We hope everybody comes out and has a few burgers and pulled pork and a lot of other good things. So I'm here today, as you know, for the past, I think, eleven or twelve years, the state runs a performance measurement program, and each year we decide, the board decides to participate in that, and as you can see from your packet, it's a lot of the different areas that we keep track of stats and statistics for the county, and each department contributes to this report. I'm the one that just puts it together for the state. And so what I'm here to request permission to participate, continue participating for the two thousand twenty-four report, which will be due July first of two thousand twenty-five. The resolution that you have at the back is that resolution to continue this program. And we do get paid by the state for participating in this program, and for the two thousand twenty-two program, we received nine thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars from the state in December of two thousand twenty-three, and then we will just, we will get two thousand twenty-three's money at the end of two thousand twenty-four. So with that being said, the only correction I have on your agenda item sheet is the implementation timeline. I will send the two thousand twenty-three report to the state auditor by July first, not July second, when it's due. So that being said, I'm open for questions.
Any questions? Any questions for Darren?
I think it's a good program that we're doing, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. It will be posted on the county website for ninety days, so the citizens can see it as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have, let me get current here. Rory Schmidt is here, request approval to hire one full-time employee in cybersecurity analyst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. So as Commissioner Ebbinger mentioned, we, I'm here today to request a new position. It'd be a full-time position for a cybersecurity analyst. This position would be responsible for handling all things cybersecurity at the county and coordinating efforts with the existing team and technology services, along with data loss prevention for the county and working with each of the department heads to ensure that electronic compliance is met across the organization. So to give a little recap here, for the two thousand twenty-four budget, it was approved by the board to add a new request of eighty-five thousand dollars for a new security product, a security monitoring event solution, and the product we were shooting for ultimately was declined by the Minnesota B C A due to lack of compliance on the products part. So went back to the drawing board, demoed nine or ten different security solutions, ultimately settling on one that was, for this first year, two thousand twenty-four, was thirty-three thousand dollars, four hundred, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, which left us a difference of fifty-one thousand, roughly fifty-one thousand dollars out of that eighty-five that was approved. So the request would be to use the remainder of that money for this year to hire this cybersecurity analyst, and then going forward, so in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, there'd be roughly sixty-two thousand dollars available out of that eighty-five to potentially put towards this position. I guess that would be, that would be up to the board to decide if we could move that money around from professional services over to salaries. And then in two thousand twenty-five, the remaining balance for that, out of that sixty-two thousand dollars, the new position costs, there'd be roughly thirty to forty-three thousand dollars left over, which I would like to use some of our caseworks balance, and that'll be going away at the end of this year, so we'd have a little bit of money in that fund to help offset the cost of this position. And then in two thousand twenty-six, that caseworks balance would ultimately be going away or reserved for other items or other funds, and then the ask would be in two thousand twenty-six, that the remainder of that new position cost be added as a increase to my budget. Any questions on that?
And just, I do want to note that this went before pick, and we forwarded on for the, for the full commission. Just, it's kind of a timeline, this was enlightening to me. Could you describe the personnel numbers that you've had over the years? Basically, what I understood from pick is that there's never been an increase in your staffing, but there has been decreases?
There has been increases. It was about, four years ago, we hired a systems administrator, and then the following year, there was also a computer support specialist added. So total, with myself included, there's nine of us in technology services, so this would be a tenth person in the position.
You've had cutbacks before?
I wouldn't say cutbacks, no. We've tried to lower our budget as much as possible, but...
Okay, I think I'm confusing this with another item we have. You're right.
Okay.
Okay. But your workload has increased, and staffing's been fairly...
Security, cybersecurity-wise and just security in generals, just with different criminal justice policies, HIPAA policies, you know, we're going through that security posture assessment with social services now. It's just, all of that just seems to be really increasing here in the last couple of years, and I don't see it slowing down at all.
Okay. Any questions?
Did you have questions, Frank?
I was just going to say that we did discuss this at pick, and because of that cybersecurity we had last year, we felt it was necessary to fill this position and...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Campbell.
The previous product that we had approved was the eighty-five thousand, and now you're saying for the remainder of two thousand twenty-four, we could get that...
Roughly fifty-one thousand, yep.
Fifty-one thousand?
Yep.
Okay, because I'm, in here, I'm saying thirty-three thousand, four thirteen.
Oh, sorry, that was the total cost of the product, plus onboarding and training for this year, for the new product, the replacement product, which would leave a balance of fifty-one thousand.
Okay, you're talking about the balance, and I was talking about the cost of the product.
Sure. Yep. So year two of that product, it actually lowers because there's no onboarding and training costs, so next year, we're looking around twenty-three thousand dollars for that renewal.
And it, does that product have any, are there users involved with that, or is it just a standard fee, whether you have...
Right, yeah, so it's...
Not like a license thing where we have to buy so many licenses?
It is based on device, or server, or workstation. That's the licensing model. We're actually paying the perpetual licensing model, not the subscription, which is a little bit cheaper for us overall, especially if we keep it in the long term.
I guess we felt at the pick that just one cybersecurity attack on our county is going to be worth this position, so...
Yeah, and I will mention, you know, just having this position isn't going to eliminate the possibility of this happening to us again, but it's, the idea is to reduce the risk.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
Have motion and a second. Are you needing a backfill on this, potentially?
Unsure at this time.
Okay, should we include that in the motion in case he needs a backfill?
Okay, I'll include that.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Rory.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, we've got Sheriff Empting and Chief Deputy Chris Martin coming up. Approve hiring of one full-time deputy due to retirement.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. I was informed last week that Deputy Janelle Roggenbach has indicated her intent to retire on September twentieth, twenty twenty-four of this year. Janelle's been with us for over thirty-three years. She's been assigned to the Warrants and Transports Division. She has done an excellent job there, and she's definitely earned her long retirement, hopefully long retirement, and we're just looking to replace this position. There would not be a need for a backfill position or anything like that. We would be looking to advertise through the post board and to take applications once approved by the board.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Make a motion to approve.
And motion to second. Any further discussion?
Sheriff, is the intent that the new person that you hire would move into this role? Are you going to make some shifts?
That would probably, that'd probably depend on who's interested in this particular role. There's always shifts like this, generally. It would probably be somebody that's going to go on patrol, and then somebody currently working would move into this role. It just all depends on who's interested.
Any other questions? Have motion to second on the floor, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. You're up on the next one, too, Sheriff.
All right, well, thank you for this. I'm giving you another two thousand twenty-four squad car update. These are never-ending, it seems like. Of course, the past history is we ordered six cars for two thousand twenty-four. Enterprise said we were only going to get two. We ended up finding Durangos. We got some Durangos and an additional Tahoe. I was contacted here, probably four, six weeks ago, by Enterprise. They indicated that the cars that we ordered for two thousand twenty-four and that were in were mistakenly ordered black instead of the white, so they had asked the dealership what they were going to do about that. The dealership had said, well, we'll find them a white car. They magically found a white car, and then they said, well, you've still got this other car on order. If you would like to take possession of that car as well, you can do that, to add an additional car to the fleet. I did have a two thousand twenty-two that, I mean, we could, we could replace. I did not have it in the original request because the deputy felt that his car would be fine. It's a car that's assigned to Lieutenant Josh Schroeder. He felt that his assignment would be just fine, and he could keep his car another year. If approved by the board, what I would end up doing is replacing Deputy Schroeder's car, and then using his car as an additional spare car, as it seems like we're always down in our fleet right now, just due to mechanical issues, hitting wildlife, things of that nature. Also attempting to plan for the future and hope, working with our county administrator and Justin Sorum, that when we get that MinDOT building out in Holly, we'd be able to put a spare car out there, as we do have several deputies that do live on the east end of the county, and they would be able to have a car available to them if they were to drop their car at their shop on the east end. I think this is a good plan, moving forward. As you can see, internal service funds we have available for our two thousand twenty-two cars, sixty-two thousand, seven sixty-one. The estimated costs are in there with the emergency equipment, the cost of upfitting, the in-car camera, and I indicated on there that would be the in-car camera only. I'm not looking for cloud storage on that, just due to it being a spare. We would not need cloud storage, and then the one-year lease of approximately forty-seven, five eighty-five. Also, if this car does come in two thousand twenty-four, which is a good possibility that it does, we have saved approximately twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-four, because we have not taken delivery of those two Tahos that are currently at North Country and Hibbing. So we do have a savings there. If it comes in early, let's say it's six months early, that would cost us an additional seventy-six hundred dollars, so there are funds available for that as well.
Questions for the sheriff?
Just for clarification, every car you're working with is still on the lease program, right?
Um...
Of the new...
Of the new ones, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, they're still on the lease program.
Right, including the one you're talking about.
Including this one as well.
That follows, the one you're leasing here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, it makes sense to me, so I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Second.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Good luck. Keep bringing them in when you can find them.
We'll do that for sure. I did receive an email on Friday from Enterprise that apparently a large southern agency somewhere could not take delivery of the cars they ordered, and that was forty Tahos and twenty Silverados. Unfortunately, they're not the right color for us. They're sterling gray, and per state statute, they have to be a specific color for patrol, and that does not work for us.
Yep.
So, but they're out there.
Keep hunting.
Thank you.
All right.
You can take Matt, not the hearing, but the...
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah. Matt, if you want to cover the other items you've got before the, the one item, the agenda item that we've added.
The hearing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners, would you like me to cover the addition? Or the...
The agenda addition.
The agenda addition, okay.
He does have a third item with, he has the public hearing, he has the addition, and then he also, you were doing the Memorial Forest.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
We can, we can start with the agenda item, and if you have time, we'll do the Memorial Forest.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, and thank you for your willingness to entertain this agenda item at such short notice. I just kind of found out about it yesterday, and it seems like a fantastic opportunity for both the S W C D and for the county. This is a grant opportunity through the Board of Water and Soil Resources, and essentially what it would be is providing funding to establish or restore or enhance pollinator habitat in the county, and similar to what was done out at the Crestwood site. And so looking at, the S W C D is kind of the lead on this, and they're, they're taking the, they're the fiscal agent essentially on this, and they'll be providing, there's a match that they would be providing in terms of funding, and then also technical assistance as well. And so what this, this grant opportunity would allow us to do is allow us to develop a number of our county flood buyout properties and for pollinator habitats similar to Crestwood. And what the benefits that I see for the county in doing this, in addition to providing more opportunities for county residents to enjoy some lovely native vegetation, is reduce one, number one would be reduced maintenance costs. We're starting to see where we're going to have, where we're having to maintain these properties more regularly with mowing and spraying, and with Crestwood, what we've found is we don't really have the mowing and spraying costs that we would with some of our other properties in Crestwood that don't have that, that pollinator habitat. And so my request today would be to just partner with the S W C D and select probably up to ten sites to serve kind of as the land for this pollinator habitat development. Any questions for me at all?
Questions for Matt?
I would say anything we can do to help the butterflies is appropriate, so I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second with a note. Again, when we've had the Solon Lauder meetings, this has come up several times over the last month or so, and certainly the idea that they see all the benefits that Matt has talked about.
We have motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Good for the butterflies.
Yes.
And we still have time, Matt, for you to cover the request approval of Memorial Forest utility easement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So this request is from Midco, and they are asking for a utility easement on our Memorial Forest property. I kind of have it pulled up here on your screen so you can see where exactly that is. So they're looking at two locations, kind of right off forty-four and ten, and then down towards the railroad bridge there, and the ask for this is to bring fiber optic internet to Buffalo River State Park. And so that's kind of the reason that they're asking for this. Attorney's Office has reviewed the easement. They don't have any issues with it at all. It's very similar to the easement that was approved for Red River Valley Co-op Power a year or two ago. The one, I think, main thing in here that we made sure to include was that if there were going to be any trees or vegetation that needed to be cut down, that they would seek county approval first, just because of this being the Memorial Forest. We wouldn't want a tree that's part of the Memorial Forest to be cut down. Any questions for me at all on this?
Questions for Matt?
I do a little bit. I don't, I don't understand what's the connection between northern easement and the southern, what, you're showing two easements.
Yep.
Okay, just maybe I missed it. Why are there two separate easements?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Krabben, I have to think, but the reasoning is, is they can use kind of existing right-of-way for the remainder of that easement. These are just the areas where they would require some work to be done, either in terms of setting up like a box or something like that, but they just, it wouldn't, it would be outside that right-of-way.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of going in, and then this area that, I'm just curious, I know it's just a overview, looking down, is that near a river channel, or what's that lighter shade?
Down here?
Yeah.
No, it's just different trees, yeah, like aspen.
Just curious.
Yep. Poplar trees.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the grant, easement grant.
Second. Have motion to second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Matt, you're too good. Let's take a five-minute break, and then nine o'clock, we'll open Okay, it's nine o'clock. We're back in session. Our next item is a public hearing for Splankowski Holdings Limited, request for a major-platted subdivision.
Make a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Have motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, we're in public hearing. If you would, Matt, proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is a request for a seven-lot residential subdivision. The name of the plat would be Hay Creek Meadows Subdivision. I'd be on a sixty, roughly almost sixty-eight acre parcel. This is just south of Downer. It's on the east side of Trunk Highway nine. The zoning of the parcel is agricultural general. Currently, it's used for pasture. There's some wetlands on the property. There's like an old gravel pad and a shed on the property as well. In this area where there were, where there's trees, there's that kind of a history of gravel mining, so it was a gravel pit in the past. So the comprehensive plan goals and objectives relative to this subdivision request in our residential goal category, we have a goal to provide opportunities for quality resident, rural residential development in Clay County. The objectives on which this goal is implemented is through implementing residential density standards that allow for rural residential development while retaining the rural character of Clay County, permitting large lot non-farm residential development if a portion of the property is preserved or converted to a use that retains the rural character of the land, and to avoid or mitigate residential development on or near environmentally sensitive lands or lands with high-quality natural resources. So from our development code, land division by a plat is required whenever you're making one or more non-residential lot or three or more lots that would be residential. I just want to pull up the, this was the preliminary plat. It's kind of hard to see, and I'll get to the final plat here. The, not many changes were necessary to the preliminary plat. Regarding soils, looking at, one thing we look at with, when looking at these residential subdivisions, especially if farmland is being converted, is looking at the, I guess, the agricultural value of the land, and so looking at this, just based on our land classification for prime farmland, as well as the crop equivalency rating, which basically is a measure of how economically productive the land would be for agriculture, they're all, it's all very, pretty low on this parcel, so not a whole lot of ag value here. In terms of wetlands, there are some wetlands scattered throughout the property, mainly in the northeast. Most of these, especially kind of in the center, central part of the parcel, are kind of remnants from gravel mining. And then soils, looking at soils really, not only for construction, but also for septic drain fields. So like a lot of Clay County, not very good absorption in these soils, so, which requires like a, kind of an ad grade or half-mown system. So fortunately, there are ways to mitigate against poor soils with septic. In terms of setbacks, this, all of the lot, proposed lots in this subdivision would meet all the setbacks, and there'd be ample room for residential development. What the developer plans to do is seven residential lots, the average of each of these lots would be eight and a half acres. There'd be three accesses off Trunk Highway nine for lots one through four. Lots three and four would share an access. There'd be three accesses off One Hundredth Avenue South. There'd be private sewer and water. The applicant, or the developer did get some well testing done, so there was an existing well on one of the lots, pumping at a rate of a hundred gallons per minute. Kind of our minimum that we look for with a new residential development is five gallons per minute, so well above that. They also tested for contaminants, and then everything looked good there, except, of course, arsenic, so some mitigation would have to be done there in terms of... of course arsenic. So some mitigation would have to be done there in terms of arsenic mitigation. And then they do have restrictive covenants. The restrictive covenants essentially would dictate kind of what, the minimum size of homes, no mobile homes, things like that. Making sure that they're following the, the county code for, if they're going to be any keeping of animals on residential parcels or anything like that.
Matt, while I got you on this page, these three accesses off of Trunk Highway 9, is that something that MINDOT would have to approve?
They have already approved those accesses. Yep. There was a change, there was, there are already two accesses on there, so they approved a new one, and then they did a change of use essentially for the, for the other accesses.
Thank you.
Yep. And the applicant did provide those approvals with his application.
Okay, cool.
We did get some comments at the Planning Commission Public Hearing from Elkton Township. They had some concerns on 100th Avenue South. Basically, there's, isn't any winter maintenance on 100th Avenue South, but speaking with Justin and the Highway Department is, is able to do, pick up the winter maintenance on, on 100th Avenue South. There's also kind of an old dumping ground on the property, so it was kind of used as a gravel pit back in the late 30s through the 70s. Half gravel pit, half makeshift landfill for Elkton Township residents only, to kind of dump their garbage. A lot of that was hauled off when they reclaimed the gravel pit to the land, to the landfill. I will say this is probably an 8,500 square foot site. The developer has actually tested both the water and he's done, they've done soil borings, just to see what the, if there's any issues from leaching of any contaminants or any environmental concerns associated with that old site. And that all tested negative. They know exactly where it is, and he plans on including it on the seller disclosures as well. So I just want to pull up the...
What line is that on?
I think that's up here, so, and I can let the developer speak to it, but lot three, I want to say. So this is, I'll try and zoom in here on the plat. So we've got lots five, six, and seven, kind of running on 100th Avenue South here. And then one through four would all have access off of Trunk Highway 9. There is an easement on this as well, just an access easement to the, the property over here, I should, should note. And one of the, that kind of influenced the design of, or the layout of this lot, just to keep that easement all on, on one lot. Any questions for me at all?
Questions for Matt. Commissioner Kravenoff?
Just a couple minor things, just, just to refresh my mind. So when we have a delineated wetland, what's the setback for, is that 100?
Be 50 feet.
It's 50 feet?
Yep.
Okay. And then the...
We call that the mosquito buffer, too. I don't know if that's enough.
Okay. And they're big, big lots, so...
Yes.
Obviously, they're any impact. You said those, they were, most of those are from gravel mining? The wetlands, the areas where they were dug?
Yeah, I think a portion of the, especially, because the gravel mining kind of ran through kind of this northeast and central kind of part of the, the parcel.
Sure.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's very interesting if you go back and look at Downer from aerial maps from the 30s and 40s.
Do they stay wet, or is, are they just more cattails?
That would be a great question for the developer.
Just curious. And then back to the township road, if we maintain that, how is that, I'm, just from my knowledge, how are those costs maintained? I mean, who pays for that? How, how does that work?
That would just go into the con, to the contract with the township, because the, the Highway Department already does this, the summer maintenance and graveling on that. So just picking up the plowing, too.
Okay.
It'd just be an extra mile for Elkton Township.
Well, it'd be, it'd be, so if it's a no-winter-maintenance road right now, it's an hourly contract. And so if they take it off of no-winter-maintenance and becomes a regular contract, then it would, they would get the annual rate, which is probably in some many ways more affordable anyway.
Yeah.
By doing it that way, so.
But that's on the township.
That's on the township, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got one. On the covenant, I don't know if we can cover that yet or not, but I know item number seven says vehicles must be stored neatly and have current registration at all times. I mean, is that a requirement? If you have a vehicle on, let's say you have an antique vehicle, you don't, you're not using, would that have to be registered all the time?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, in our current code, you can essentially have two non-licensed, uninsured, non-roadworthy vehicles per property. If you have more than that, they would have to be stored inside, essentially. We don't allow the outdoor storage of parts either, so it's roughly in line with our code. As a covenant, it can be more restrictive than the county code as well.
I just thought that was pretty restrictive, you know, that they have to be registered all the time.
Yeah, and that, that would be, that would be a developer choice for that, because it's a, kind of a private agreement, essentially, the restrictive covenants.
I thought that was pretty restrictive, but very good.
Any other questions for Matt? Do we have anyone here that wants to speak to this issue? Developer, possibly. Would you just step up and give your name and address to there at the podium?
Yo Splankowski, with Splankowski Holdings. You want my address, you said?
You need the address, Sarah?
17252, 280th Street North, Ullin, Minnesota. We did go to Elkton Township meeting last night, and they signed the plat. And we had to talk about the winter maintenance and all that, and they were on board with everything. Everything was good. So they did talk to the Highway Department, sounded like there's possibly some brush that had to be removed along our property that would hold snow, and maybe have to re-landscape the ditch. There's not much of a ditch for maybe about 100 or 200 yards there. But, but they signed off on everything, and everything was good. They also gave us the permits for the accesses along the north side. We have a copy of their minutes from the meeting from that.
Questions from Mr. Splankowski?
Just...
Mr. Kravenoff?
So where they were, where those, where that area was mined, I'm just curious, do they hold water, or are they more cattails, or?
Yeah, so the area through the center where you see it was mined, it's all trees, it's like 50-foot trees. And that's actually not really the low area. The low area is off in the northeast corner. That's kind of the low area. It's seasonally wet.
Oh, yeah.
Like when you got all that rain this spring, there was one hole where they dug out. There was, there was a little bit of water in that, but I, I think the soil and water called it seasonable or seasonal something. Normally, they're all dry, even this spring. There was only one hole where they dug down, about 10 feet.
Yeah.
They had some water in the bottom of it.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, it's that sandy loam, it seemed, doesn't seem, really seem to hold the water.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just a, my comment here in reviewing the packet, I noticed at the very back of the packet, there's a Hay Creek Meadows restrictive covenants. It's, it's been my long understanding that from a government standpoint, we do not recognize restrictive covenants. That's something that I think that is amongst landowners, and if there becomes disputes in that, that goes to a, a court for, for, you know, clarification and not, not planning and zoning or any of that nature. So I think it's just, just for the record, even though that this has been submitted as a document within the application, we have no jurisdiction over restrictive covenants at the government level. Am I correct in that, Brian?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, really, it's, there is actually a, a quote-unquote enforcement mechanism within, typically within restrictive covenants, covenants that basically state exactly what you just said, is that the, the residents of the subdivision have the privilege and the, to enforce these covenants. And sometimes the developer can be involved in that, too. And that's all, would be all done civilly.
That's right.
Yep, and it just gives...
That's the only point I was trying to make, is that if there's ever a dispute amongst regarding the restrictive covenants, that hand, that's handled through a civil process and not through county planning and for enforcement.
Yep.
Okay. I thought it'd been my understanding that we were required to put them on the, required to have them? I thought we were...
Yeah, so we have, it's, it's a requirement of the code to have covenants, and essentially what that does is it gives, what it does is it gives the residents basically a legal mechanism to handle any, any issues. So it's kind of a...
Aside the county.
To cover, to cover, yeah, liability from theirs. Yep.
I guess what we tried to do with, what we did is there's another development about two miles away. We got a copy of theirs, along with another one, and we took the pieces. We tried to, it's rural life, people move to the country typically because they want more, more independence and freedom. So we tried to walk that fine line between keeping peace with your neighbors and still having that freedom. This is kind of what we came up with.
I, I mean, I'm not saying they're a bad thing. I'm just saying that when they're, if there becomes a dispute...
Yeah.
The resolution of that dispute is not handled through planning and zoning. It's handled through a, a civil process where they would have to take somebody to court.
Right.
Commissioner Gross?
Is there one question? I think it's a great idea. I mean, the lots are eight and a half acres. Are you, is that a requirement? They have to be that big, or is that something you, you want? It's eight and a half acres, isn't, that's a, seems to be a big lot to buy to put a house on.
It, it is a big lot. A lot of my family, they're, they're into horses and livestock. Typically, when you get people that live in the rural setting, you want livestock.
Yeah.
You, you want more than five acres. If you look, and there's also rules from the county about how many animal units per acre.
Right.
And typically, if you're, if you're looking, if you're trying to sell lots to the equestrian area, or people who want to have a few cows, you need to have more than five acres. And that was our goal. It's really close. It's 15 minutes from Warhead, two miles from interstate, but it's beautiful rural Clay County. It's gorgeous. It's perfect, prime horse country.
I think it is a great idea. I mean, but I thought they were big lots if you just want to put a house on there, but...
They are big.
For your purposes, it's, it's great. I mean, it's, I was just wondering, I thought they were big lots.
Any other questions? Mr. Splankowski. Anything else, sir? Do we have anybody else who wishes to address the commission on this matter?
Did Matt cover everything he needed to cover? Did you cover everything you needed to cover on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell.
Then Mr. I move we close the hearing.
Second.
A motion to close the, and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hey, we're out of the public meeting, back in our regular session.
I move we approve the Hay Creek Meadows final plat based on Planning Commission recommendations.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, we have Troy Ammison, Detox Director, with a presentation for us. Kathy McKay and Joe Wilson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Today, we're going to give you an update on our staffing and how that is going for the new facility. Joe's also joining us, and we'll discuss our transition plan and how we're going to tackle moving to our new facility when it's completed. So, last time we were here, we had a number of positions to fill, and we have actually been able to fill quite a few of them. And I can go through the list. It's, it's been updated since you received this list. But, so our case aid is filled. The Detox LPNs, we currently now have 11 full-time, and we're in need of two more. A variable hour employee has indicated an interest in taking a position in August, and we are working on setting up a interview with another LPN next week. So if both of those come through, we should be full of LPNs for the new facility. As far as Detox RNs, we've got three current ones, and we do have another interview tomorrow, actually, for another position for the RN. Our techs, we currently have five. We're going to hire three more. We do have some very qualified candidates that are currently variable hour, so we'll be interviewing them, and we should be able to fill from within and, and fill those positions. Our Detox peer support, we're going to need three more variable hour staff. We currently have one person handling it now. Since we gave you this sheet, the LEDC position is actually filled. We do have, a variable hour has decided that she would like to move into the full-time position, so we will be full there, and then we will just need to hire some variable hours to offset their hours on the weekends. RN team lead currently have one. We're going to need one more team lead before we move over there. We haven't had any applicants yet for that. The same with the RN team supervisor. That's been open for quite some time, and we just have not had any qualified candidates apply for that position. So...
And Mr. Chair and Commissioners, in regards to the RN supervisor that's required, an RN must oversee the Nurse Practice Act of all the LPNs and, and staff there. So we cannot operate without the RN supervisor. I've been doing that over the years, qualified to oversee the Nurse Practice Act, work with the physician, you know, work with the medical protocols. We're considered a clinically managed care, so we have to have that medical oversight. So that's a requirement. I'm under the license of DHS, so continue to do that as long as there's the gap there. Hopefully, we'll find somebody, because it's a bit of work for both Troy and myself, lots of things to, to oversee with that RN supervisor. So again, haven't had any success in recruitment for almost two years. So it's a position that's really, we're in dire need of.
If we don't have that position filled, can we open?
Yes, because I serve in that capacity.
If I don't, Kathy, what's, what's making that so difficult to hire that position if it's...
Um, you know, the...
That seems like a long time to be in search of a position.
And, and we were in search of positions, if you recall, even in public health. There was two-year gap for us to get even case management RNs and RNs in our home visiting program. The RN market is tight, and...
Well, I fully understand that. I'm just wondering if, you know, what do we need to do?
Well, salaries are, are one of the things. And of course, Darren, with the market study, hopefully we'll come up with some salaries. We had an RN that was interested, and her salary was at the end of our scale for RN, so we can't hire someone at the end of our scale. So seems to be a problem. Troy's been recruiting heavily and been using the system called Indeed. That's where a lot of nurses are looking for positions, but we don't know what, what, other than the salary, we haven't heard why we're not getting, should be someone out there that would want this position.
That would be a daytime position, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yes, because we have the team lead, so they can cover some of the shifts. But, you know, if there's a need, then the nurse supervisor would have to be available to take any, anything that comes up. I'm 24/7 anyway because of emergency preparedness, so I'd be available now. But the RN supervisor, we would need available, just like Troy's available 24/7. So that'd be a requirement, but not necessarily having to be in-house.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yeah, just a comment. I'm certainly impressed with the number of hirers you're getting. I don't know if you've been surprised by that, but, you know, from someone looking on the outside end, knowing how difficult it is in the nursing space, you get people... on the outside end, knowing how difficult it is in the nursing space, you get people, I'm, I'm impressed. And I'm just curious, what, if you can, what is the appeal that has, you know, brought these LPNs into this place? Is there just a larger workforce or is it the appeal toward, you know, the detox area? I'm just kind of curious.
Other than working for Kathy and I?
Yeah. Other than working for you two. The charm, I suppose there is some charm involved.
You know, it, it, there's, there's interest in, in nursing for psych work and this has a lot of psych involved in it. So it's one of those things where it's, it's hard to find them, but when you do find them, they are very interested. Lot of nurses looking for a change. The one that I'll interview, an LPN and an RN, they're, they're both looking for change. Word of mouth, you hire, I, I just hired an LPN last week. She told an RN that she works with and now we'll interview her tomorrow. So you, you see some of that trickle effect.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner Kravenoff, the LPNs have not been difficult to recruit. As you can tell by our Troy is getting those, they've been much easier to recruit.
Just so you know, there's no retirement plans for you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Oh, just to piggyback off of Commissioner Kravenoff's comments, I, you know, and I, I'm going to make some assumptions that when you move into your new state-of-the-art facility, that the comparison to having the work environment there versus your current site is going to have an impact on, on your ability to hire as well.
Yep.
I mean, that's going to be a beautiful facility, you know, when you consider the purpose of it, but it's still going to be, it's going to have all the up, updated technologies and everything that's.
Yep.
I think it's going to be a benefit to you for your hiring process.
And, and that has been a selling point when I talk to potential candidates, so.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the real advantages we have is we're providing a service that's desperately needed for the entire region in a new facility that we're going to staff correctly, that's got the resources that professionals need to keep their clients safe and to get them back on their feet. And you're right, it's got components, there's going to be a lot of tool diagnosis people in there. They've got substance problems and mental health needs. And this is, you know, it's kind of like an emergency room. People go, oh my gosh, how can you work there? The people that do it love it.
Yeah.
And I think this has got the same degree of, of having a mission and having an opportunity to do it right. I hope people are listening out there, but this is a, and working for the county and we're, and that's a good long-term career. So.
Yep.
Wish you luck on that. I'm glad you're making the advances you are. And I think, once word gets out on this, I think people will be interested, hopefully. Any other questions?
Uh, I'd sort of jump in here a little bit since they're talking staffing and we thought it was a good idea to just give you a quick update. What we've done is we formed a transition team for the move of this building. And what we did is we formed a team that has Troy and Kathy and myself and Mark Sloan, who deals with the communication side, and then Rory on the technology side. So we've, we've gotten together. We've met once already. And our goal, what we've really established is we really have four categories that we're working on right now and what, and plan to put together a transition plan to bring to the July 8th meeting, to update everybody and have the, the full committee there, look at it and try to determine what we need. But really our four categories so far that we've talked about is number one, we've, we've identified that there are some inspections that are through DHS, MDH, that have to happen certain times, one before the other before it happens. And then also we're working with Gerts to make sure we get that occupancy by that date too. So part of that transition team, we've added James from Gerts as he knows the deadlines and, and then we can plan for them. So, so inspections were really one important category for us. And the other one, number two was Troy and Kathy, their team has, you know, just operations. What do they have to do to move from one to the other site? And so they're working through their punch list. And then we, we have a third category, preliminary setup is what it is. And we're finding that the, the inside of the building will be done a month early prior to the outside. And so that allows us to get in there and do a lot of pre-set up when it comes to setting up computers, furniture, FFNE, technology, working out the bugs, doing all that stuff. So it's really, we don't oftentimes get that. So, so we're going to capitalize on that and we're going to get in there and do that and go through that. So creating that punch list of what we can do ahead of time to make this easy. And then the fourth is just the move itself, that day. So they're figuring out how do you, how do you move your clients and everything? And then we're planning what we need to do to actually move everything. So just wanted a quick touch on all that, but we plan on putting a whole punch list together, bringing it to the committee for, for, for their discussion and just to let you know, we're thinking about it, so. Questions?
Questions for Joe. As usual, just reassuring to hear our staff describe what they're doing. We know that we have competent, experienced people that are on this and it's, it's, it just adds the excitement. You know, I'm sure there'll be some glitches and surprises for all of us, but it's good to know you've got people on top of it.
Mr. Joe, and I'm assuming there's some, some planning going on about the notification of other agencies and entities who might bring people to.
Yes.
That facility where all, where all of a sudden it's going to switch. We don't want them going to the old place.
Yep, we actually, it's kind of a combination of Troy's team and working with MIS, also, also myself as managing the building at the FSC. So we, between all of us, we were going to post it over there. They're going to reach out to their, their people and then we'll make sure we have it on the website ahead of time too, so. Yes, we're working on that.
Any other questions? Really appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Joe, you're still up.
Yeah, well, yeah, I can. I kind of need them, maybe.
Well, next, next we have Joe Olson with a request to approve or for approval to advertise a full-time custodial position with Draw Management Detox Facility.
Yes, I just, I have the, I have Troy and Kathy here with me too for this. Of course, this is part of one of our punch list transition is to make sure we have a custodian in place. We budgeted last year, it was approved and it's a one full-time position. We did not hire, we held off until obviously the building is open. So we know that sometime towards the end of August, we're going to need custodian and so we'd like to start advertising now. Usually takes, depending on background, could take a six weeks to two months. So we want to hire and get everybody and have somebody on staff by then. So I'm requesting to advertise for that, so.
Any questions for Joe? Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. Chair, Joe is, will that, will that full-time person be able to handle the DMV as well?
No, what, what this is, this is eight, this is a full-time position that will be strictly to detox. It's going to be a daytime position that works with Troy. We have DMV staff already at the mall and so we're going to be transitioning them over to the new building. So we do have enough at the mall to cover the new DMV, so there won't be a added cost to that. But definitely we had an increase in size of the, the facility itself. There's more than enough to do. So they're going to do their normal cleaning like we do any other building, but they're also going to kind of be there during the day if, you know, something happens, Troy needs a cleanup or whatever. So it's definitely going to be a, a needed position. We do have some variable hour backup type scenarios that we do, that we use, you know, for either, you know, an RRC, a variable hour or a, or the, the DMVs to help backup type scenarios. But that is one dedicated position anyways to detox, so. So.
Commissioner Kravenoff.
Joe, does it, are you thinking someone brand new to the, the whole system or, for this spot and, and/or do you expect someone you already have transitioning there and you're filling here?
Right. Historically, we've promoted within. Usually there's somebody that's worked their way up and is capable of doing that. So, and being a daytime position too, that is a, that's a highly sought-after position too. So I'm not sure who wants it, but it definitely, we have a good chance of seeing who internally would take it first. So, so I mean, good point, you brought that up with, with requesting to backfill if, if we do, so thank you for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring plus backfill if necessary.
I have motion to second and it's going to include the backfill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We need another break.
I don't know if Dilworth's out there. Are they, are they here?
They're, yep, they're, we're right on time.
Can we?
If you need a break.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we are back in session. And next up, we have Dilworth City Manager Peyton Mestera and the Mayor Chad Olson here to present the Dilworth Local Option Sales Tax Presentation. Phil, send on what's going, going towards getting the new community center built. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you Commissioners for having us this morning to present our upcoming Local Option Sales Tax referendum vote. And I'm actually going to turn the show over to the mayor to do the majority of the presenting. We're just starting our barnstorming tour right now of going around making our presentations. Did the first one last night. This is the second one. We're going to be the two main representatives doing this. So this is Chad's trial run right here, so be kind to him.
Thank you Peyton. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We appreciate the time this morning and we will be judicious as we, as we go through this. We do have a slide for questions at the end, but at any point in time, if you have questions, please just let me know and we'll answer them in step. So the city of Dilworth, we've made a commitment, we've been making a commitment, there's a tradition of commitment to providing amenities to our residents. And recently, we put forth of the public service or public safety element and we, we're using our fire station as, as a catalyst, right? Our fire station is now under construction in the current area of our community center. And as a result, and our commitment to investments in the amenities, we're really looking at our community center now to support the quality of life that our residents expect and deserve, just the amenities in, in town. And this November, we are going to ask our residents to consider a half-cent sales tax to help fund our new community center project. And again, with this site we're looking to use, it will better serve our growing population. A brief history really focuses on the challenges of our former community center. It was built four decades ago with, with great intention and it has served us well. But we have identified deficiencies in our community center that include but are not limited to the ability to support a wider range of activities, become more inclusive to our growing community. Insufficient storage, we did not have, we were, the old community center was grandfathered in, so ADA restrooms, the, the restrooms were severely insuff, in, insufficient, why could I not get that word out? Insufficient as, as we've progressed over those 40 years, our HVAC and mechanical was failing and maintenance and repair was, you know, getting to the point where replacement is actually the most economically sound decision. And as we look at this, when we were talking about the new location, why move the community center was, is a frequent question. And we did have a facilities assessment done throughout the city of Dilworth and really concluded that the community center and fire station, there was a safety and security issue for coexistence. So the, the independent analysis came back and said that your best option for safety and security would be to separate the two, have your fire station in one location and community center in another. And that's the, the avenue that we have been following to this point. When we're looking at, looking forward for the next 40 years, we are really looking towards growth in the center itself. Our first look is going to be focused on a community space, a usable space for various activities, areas for youth and senior programs, adequate storage for future events, along with a modern, large modern kitchen and updated equipment and technology. That is our first step and that's where we're going initially. But we're going to build this, the, the plan is to build this with an opportunity for expansion. Taking a very pragmatic approach and keeping all things considered, especially a budget. The, the future for this community center will evolve it into like a community rec center where it will be able to include a walking track, potential daycare, fitness spaces and other opportunities as it grows. Again, when we're looking at our next 40 years, we want to make sure that we have the ability to grow the center in a means that accommodates the needs of our, of our residents. And as such, pardon me, we looked at a, a future location that will provide for such growth. Initially, it has the resource, that has the infrastructure necessary. Streets and, and water are, are close, so we would not necessarily have to invest in additional infrastructure there. And then the site, as you can see, is highlighted in yellow. It will give us enough room to grow the center to include other amenities. Again, as they're warranted and as the need and partnerships develop, we would be able to grow and develop that community center to represent those needs and those partnerships. So we do anticipate this is a, a potential catalyst, as it says, for, for growth in services. One of the things that Dilworth does not have inside of our city limits is a healthcare facility or anything of any type. We've been in talks with healthcare providers and, and looking for a private partnership to come in and provide something, that, that next step, as we had mentioned, that, that growth piece. Additionally, we've been, we have been and will continue to be looking to develop other elements, recreational or daycare as that's, as, as we stated. And those opportunities would be those private partnerships that bring us together between the city and our, our partners to give the community center that those next steps a well, a more well-rounded amenity that provides greater services to our community. We have engaged our citizens. We've, we've conducted surveys, we've established groups and committees to help lead the discussion and lead the planning to ensure that the voices of our residents are heard, the priorities and the needs of our residents are taken in, into consideration and placed as a priority as we look to develop our new community center. There's a timeline, you can see that 2021, 23 and 23, really engaging our community. And then last year was a significant year as we presented our project to the state legislature. They approved our request for a local option sales tax after reviewing the process that we had gone through, right? From concept and the ideas of, you know, what will the community center entail to the inclusion of the citizens' voices to make sure that it's what, you know, there's citizen input and they are, their voice is driving the project. And then of course, the, the plan and the, and the finances. So the state of Minnesota did give us the go-ahead to put our half-cent local option sales tax to the voters this November. So we're fortunate for that. It does give our, I mean, as we're talking about this, I mean, the state has reviewed our process and our plan and, and given us the thumbs up and the go-ahead. And that does provide us stability as we, as we look at the financial plan. And just quick numbers, we're looking to generate 6.1 million through the local option sales tax. That's what, that's what the people who can do the math tell me, so I trust their math. I did not do the math, so you can be confident with that. And then as the county, county knows, like, it's, it's limited, right? And then, as the county, county knows, like, it's, it's limited, right? What we can do with, we can only raise the 6.1 million, and when that is paid off and that money is raised, the local option sales tax goes away. When we look at, we'll talk about the exclusion next, this, these dollars are specifically for the community center. They cannot be used for any other project, as, again, the commission already knows. And of course, one of the things that we like, we want to restate and tell our constituents is that, like, the funding for the fire station is done, it's secured, so it has, this has no bearing whatsoever. We are fortunate for our fire station. We have federal, we have state, and we have local approval, so that part is done, and this is brand-new. And, and this is, and this is where we're at today. And when we're looking at, and when, when we're looking at the funding, our next slide is why the local option sales tax. I guess, complete disclosure, because I did it backwards. When we were looking at our fire department, I considered the fire department the work. Like, we needed to make sure public safety was done. And we secured all of those dollars. We went through the bonding process with the state, and the, and the bonding process from, from the state was an eye-opener, because they opposed, they, they had opposed public safety for bonding dollars. That had been the tradition, that had been the standard all the way up until about last year. And now, with that, we chose the local option sales tax because it seemed most prudent for us. And now that we had the fire department funded, the local option sales tax will also allow us to use a revenue stream that is more encompassing of the people who actually use the facility. The local option sales tax will, can come, everyone, anyone who shops at Walmart will contribute to the funding of our community center. The, there is a significant number of residents outside of Dilworth who use the community center. And again, that was one of the motivating factors and one of the things that, excuse me, pardon me, that really allowed the state to allow us to move forward, is because of the, the usage outside of, of our residents. And this will allow a wider population, those that will use our community center, just like those that use our community center, to help fund our community center. The exemptions are very similar. They're exactly to the exemptions of the state, so there are, will be no sales tax on clothing, groceries, baby products, feminine hygiene products. Those exclusions will apply, just as they do throughout the state, to ensure that it is, is applied fairly. With that, as, as we're going through, another frequently asked question is what if this fails? We will go right, go right back to the community. We'll ask the questions. What did we miss? What did we do incorrectly? Right now, we do not have a Plan B. Like, the voices have, have drawn us to this point. The vision has brought us here. If there's something that we need to go back and look at, we're looking at delaying the project probably three years, maybe more, depending upon funding revenue. The state of Minnesota has put a moratorium on local option sales tax, so that will all come into play. And as we move forward, one of the, one of the ways that we're trying to include and make sure our referendum does not fail is, is we are doing this whirlwind tour. Anybody who wants to listen, we will definitely come and talk to. We are encouraging everyone to get out and vote and so, make their voices heard. Residents will be able to vote as, to have this opportunity. Again, we've had the opportunity and engaged our residents so far. We're going to continue to do that in, in an increasing pace. But this is really tell us where we're going to go and what's going to be our next step is in November. From there, we'll, we'll be able to make the decision as to our next step is construction or back to the drawing board. And I'm optimistic that we are going to meet the needs of the, the residents, and we're going to be able to keep Dilworth on track. And as we're looking through this, we have engaged a professional firm to help us with the do's and don'ts, to help us with the marketing. They've provided us Dilworthontrack.com, where all the questions can be answered, will be answered. And it's an excellent tool that we're trying to utilize to make sure that we are information ambassadors for our residents to make informed decisions. And again, unless I missed anything, I do want to be judicious with your time, gentlemen and lady.
Let Franco first.
My first question is, since I live in Dilworth, Brian, can I vote on this? I mean, I'm in full support of this thing, but am I able to vote on that? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Campbell.
First off, I, over the years, I've been to the community center many, many times for many, many different events, and it, and, you know, I think it's been a staple of, of Dilworth, and it's, and it's, quite frankly, I think it's really helped Dilworth be on the map, just because of its, all of the events that have occurred there, and I'm glad to see that there is an effort to continue that. I, I'm a kind of a numbers guy, so I kind of want to, I just have a couple of questions. In terms of the 7.2 million, is, is that the, is that the construction cost projection? 7.1, I think it is.
It, it is. And keep in mind, that's also a 2022 estimate. These things are obviously going, going to evolve. We did not have a site selected at that time. That was based upon our number that we got from our facilities needs assessment that we did back two or three years ago. So I'm sure that number's going to evolve, and obviously.
That'll change.
Yeah, that, that changes, obviously, but that's where, yeah, kind of our jumping off point.
And your, and then your current projections, based on your, your resources to determine how much you would collect, is this 6.1? So obviously, you have.
About a quarter million a year.
That, there's that, yeah, 244,000, I think.
Yep.
But, but the, the difference, of course, than you're, you've got other sources, but, you know, Mayor, when you, when you talk about that, that collection, sales tax collection ending when it reaches the 6.1 million, wouldn't you have the opportunity to have that end at the time the bond payment is done? Because, you know, you still, on that 6.1 million, you're still going to have interest, too, that's going to be accumulated as part of that financial plan.
Right. And ultimately, the 6.1 million, or when the bond is paid, whichever comes first, as, as I understand it, once, and the reason, again, that is a very important point for clarification. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. The, the point I always want to make to our residents is that, once the bill is paid, the tax is done.
There you go.
We, we do not, we don't, we don't want the, the idea or the misinformation to come out that says, well, once they pay it off, they're, the city's just going to keep the tax rolling, because we can't. And, and that's really the point of clarification that we want to make to our residents, is that, once we pay the bill, the tax will end.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
I, I just, that's, that's important for residents to, to know that, but it, it, it doesn't sunset because you've reached 6.1 million dollars.
Right.
It sunsets when you've paid off the total debt.
When we've paid off the, the bond, whichever comes first.
Right, yep.
And as, we have 25 years, or the debt, whichever comes first.
That's right.
The questions, the city administrator or the mayor? I just want to throw my two cents worth in there. I've been here since '06, and I have many, many, many fond memories of that community center, and you're absolutely spot-on. That's, that's been a regional resource, not just a, a Dilworth facility. And although I don't have a vote, I'm strongly in favor of this being done. It's just one more, the expansion you've got out in that part of town is very impressive. I've already been dragged out to the nursery, and dragged her into the pizza place. So it's great to see Dilworth growing out there, and it's great to see this as part of it. And I, I wish you luck in your, in your campaign to, to get this opportunity open up for the region. Anyone else? Now, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Mark Sloan, GIS and Communications Director, and County Administrator Stephen Larson, request approval for GIS and Communication Department personnel change.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, as you may recall, about two years ago, due to retirement, we came before this board to ask a shifting of positions within central administration. At that point, we hired a administrative assistant that was, that was shared between the secure, or, excuse me, between the central administration and HR, and then also a communications coordinator, who helped with the visibility of, of what great things were happening here at the county. Not knowing exactly what that would look like, we spent a good portion of the last couple of years constantly evaluating job responsibilities, other opportunities. And here, this morning, Mark and I are here, we've been having ongoing conversations along with Darren Brooke with the different roles, and, and have a, a recommendation to bring forward for your consideration. I'll turn it to Mark.
Good morning. We're here today to request a few changes to the GIS and Communications Department. Number one, we're asking to move the communications coordinator from the Administration Department into GIS and Communications. This would be effective now. There's no cost impact to that, because we're just going to slide the position over. The duties and responsibilities will stay the same. That person's going to still be here at the board. You'll see her next week, here at the, at the table. Part of that creates our, what we're really trying to do is here, create a communications team. And right now, the other half of our team is recording this meeting. We have Tim in the other room, he's taking care of that part of it, so then we'll have the two communications people taking care of the board meetings, basically hosting them. We're also going to continue to support the administrator, because he has, he, he has access to a lot of things he's doing that require communicating about, because that's where stuff is coming from. So we're going to keep, keep that person housed where they are, in the existing desk where they're sitting, and handling those issues, and providing some support to the administrator. Probably the biggest change there would be the relationship between the communications coordinator and the administrator, changes from being an employer and employee to becoming a customer of ours. So we will provide them service. We also believe that this will make a much better opportunity for guidance, direction, prioritization amongst the communication staff, as well as coordination, allowing them to be more proactive and anticipatory. What we've been doing the last year or two has not been as good as it can be, so I think we can make this better. The, the next thing we were, I'm asking for at the same time, is if, if this takes place, is to change the title of the GIS specialist to GIS coordinator. There's no change of duties, there's no cost impact to that. The reason we're doing that is to make, maintain some parity between our teams. Having all these, having all the communication staff organizationally together, I think will facilitate them to enhance our communications overall, our social media presence, will get that enhanced, expand our media relations, and be more supportive of each other. I have these handy little charts to kind of explain where we are, where we're trying to go. So at the end of the day, I think it's going to be a little bit better in how we handle our information delivery, and it will make things a lot more efficient, and it frees up a little bit of Steve's time and allows us to better respond to whatever else is happening. Are there any questions?
Questions, Mark. Commissioner Campbell.
And reviewing this, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I think it's good that Jackie and, and Tim would, you know, the way that proposal is set up, I, I just, I just want to make sure that when it comes to public communications, I think we had, you know, the intent was that, that was between the administrator and Jackie, and, and it seems to me that, you know, under the structure, are we, you know, are we then putting you in there, too, that where things need to go through? And I, I guess I just want to understand that hierarchy.
Right.
You know, I, I think there's certain things when it comes to information that's released to the public regarding issues, I, you know, that was the, that was the point in hiring Jackie, and it was, you know, and working with, with Steve. So I just want to, I, I just want to throw that out there, it's just.
No, I think that's, yeah, you're totally correct. The way we are configured now, the way at least I understand how it rolls, is Steve is still the spokesperson. We don't have a PIO specifically, so Steve is the spokesperson. And I think that, that relationship's not going to change, we're still going to use him for that, but I do think that it allows us to make it easier for us to provide some support for him, because sometimes, you know, Jackie can help, but sometimes we need other help besides what just Jackie can do, and that, and this kind of makes it a little easier. It's kind of, what we've been finding is it's relatively challenging to do some of this stuff across department lines, try to get, so that some of these things work smoothly. But, yeah, I think we'll still keep it just like it is. Steve talks, he's the spokesperson, we'll support him as best we can. My role in this, I, I'm, I'm there strictly, I think, mostly to provide the resources they need, guidance they need. If they need prioritization, things like that, that's where I step in. But besides that, I'm just going to keep things running smoothly.
And I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think the, the big thing is, is much like it is now, Jackie just doesn't put anything out on her own fruition, everything funnels through me before we do press release or anything, and that wouldn't change.
Yes.
That's exactly where, that's exactly what I want to know, because then all of a sudden, I saw that there's somebody else that, that according to the chart, he reports to.
Right.
But when it comes to that, that part is still between you and.
That is correct.
Just wanted, just to clarify that for.
Right. And just a one little tidbit here about it with Jackie, she, her, all of the software she uses now for communications is already being paid out of our budget, because we have it for some of our other staff. So there's not any change there either. That just, it's just a salary that we're talking about changing here.
The, I do want to point out, this came before pick, and we approved it forward and on. I think what assures me is we have the two links at the top of the chain of command. We're both endorsing this, and obviously, you guys are both accomplished leaders, and you communicate well between each other, and I think this would only enhance that. We're very fortunate to have Sarah in the mix here as a backup on things. You've, you've done a great job, Sarah, in the, in the time Jackie's been on leave. And I'm, I'm comfortable that this is a, a good, solid decision and a good structure for chain of command.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, and I would note, we're, we're only able to do this because of, of the talented people that we have. And, and I think that it, I will, I'll say, not just to fill in, Sarah's been amazing from the standpoint of being able to take on additional duties and, and handle them, and, and has been extremely helpful for me and for, for our staff. And so we wouldn't be able to do some of the things that we're asking to do here without both of their great work, so.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes that they plan on making in the
A motion to second, any further discussion?
Just one item, if Jackie is back to work now.
Yes, she is, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Any other comments or, or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're on to committee reports. We're going to start off with Commissioner Gross.
I had a meeting yesterday morning up at Holstead with West Central Water District. It was a very informative meeting, not that it had much to do with the water district, but there was a presentation about the dairy company coming in, in North Dakota. I guess I gave you a copy of, of, of that. I mean, they're talking about bringing in 25,000 cow herd into the, into the trail county there. And the reason they gave a presentation was the fact that the, that the water line for the West Central District will be coming from Hills, Hillsborough area and coming, we may be utilizing that. So they're increasing the size of that line so that we are able to get enough water into the state of Minnesota for those area towns that possibly will go on to that connection. So if anybody else in Chicago, I handed out a copy to everybody of the information on the dairy herd. I thought it was very interesting, what, what they had to say. They're talking about building two manager houses on the, on the complex, they're talking about building apartments on there, because they're looking at 100 employees bringing in there, so they need a lot of people there to run that place, so. And along with that, if you want to know what a dairy herd looks like tomorrow and Thursday, the. Thursday, the walk on Dairy Heard or whatever it's called, up at Gary, a little bit south of Gary, they have an open house for the next two days from nine to four. So if you're interested in that, to look at it, 4258 225th Avenue. So you just matter driving up there and taking, taking a tour of the place. So I think Paul and I are planning on going up there tomorrow and checking her out. But other things that have happened up there, the waters, we approved that Marshall and Polk County Water District, which is just north of ours, are interested in being part of our meetings too. So we approved them being part of the meetings. They'll be sending schedules and stuff like that. Another thing to discuss was the fact that we still need a third member for our, we need three from our district, I mean, from our county. So Commissioner Campbell, myself, already on there. We need one more member. So we'll be have to get that because they're sort of waiting for that in order to go to the courts to get that committee organized. Next meeting I had yesterday was with the psychiatric residential treatment facility. There's two plans going on there right now, looking for new, whether we're going to do a new building or whether we're going to look at our existing buildings and trying to reconstruct that so we can help that out. And until we get the money, we're sort of going to hold up a little bit in the planning and stuff like that. But we got two good plans available. They gave a good presentation of both plans, so we're just sort of at a standstill right now. Those were my two meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Krabinoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the last Wednesday, we had a monthly board meeting with the Historical and Cultural Society. Main points there were just our agency, our, our staff updates, a very good executive director report, and along with that, continued fundraising that they do so well for that organization and received a nice little project grant, unexpected, for $2,500. Always helpful. And then we had the election of our new officers. So now for this next period, Willie Jacobson will be our president, Deb White, Deb White will be Vice President, Garcia Sanchez de Carce will be our treasurer. That was the main one on that. A number of us will be, through the Historical Society, be working at the Humboldt Schoolhouse at the, at the county fair in July. We help out with that. Next morning, on June 20th, we had a, along with Commissioner Ebinger, we had a virtual meeting with the Suicide and Substance Prevention Group. There was a, I thought, a very, very good, deep presentation presented by Melissa Adelson from the Wilder Foundation, and she's a scientist with that. She had gone into our area and did interviews with the, they call them champions or leaders, which include students and staff that are involved with sources of strength, sources, sources of strength, excuse me. And, and this is occurring in Moorhead, Dilworth, Barnesville is where most the activity. Holly is very engaged in it. Maybe some of you have seen some of the write-ups. But again, this is a way of looking at students helping students and staff helping students to have a good view on life and the activities in their life to promote good mental health. And they've just shown great, great success. People from all walks, students from all walks of life, where maybe, you know, it's been a harder upbringing for some than others, but yet joining together and just, again, having some commonality of things that young people go through that can affect them in positive and negative ways in this program helps it build toward the positive. I'm totally impressed. Then there was a second report, and we've had this kind of a presentation here presented to us last year by Jason McCoy. And he's been working with the Dilworth, Glenon, Felton Positive Community Norms. And just to show how sources of strength and also how this norms program that they're doing with, within Dilworth, the effectiveness. And the point is, when they started this program three years ago, they had done, excuse me, surveys of those students at that time. And when it came to marijuana, that was one, it was shown that 83% at that time were aware, but were not using any, having any marijuana use. After three years in that program, a new survey was done, and now it's 92%. So again, the effectiveness of their program, and, and whether it's this or alcohol, you know, but they really show that when the numbers are that high of a student population not using chemicals, that they have a nine times less chance of using it if others aren't using. So it was a really high, it was a good meeting to be part of and see the positive things going in amongst our youth in the school districts where they, you know, interact with each other. Later that morning, went to the monthly meeting for the HRA and the Housing Resident Redevelopment Authority. These are all where we have our housing and housing assistance and housing rebuilds for people with mainly Section 8 money, federal funds. Overview right now is that the eviction, you know, we're still, we're finally getting to the end of the effects of, of during the pandemic where there couldn't be evictions. And some of the damages that were done to the buildings, people not paying their rents during that time, it really put the HRA in a kind of, well, a very difficult spot, getting a little bit behind. We helped, along with that, last year here, adding them, or allowing them that, that levy that they need. And also the grants that we were able to get through Social Services, Rhonda and Dara working closely together. Anyway, things are getting back on track. A lot of the money that they receive from the state is for rehab of these facilities, mainly in Dilworth and up in Eulon. Most of that work is done, and those units that were, had really deteriorated are now back in full rental state and with good, you know, healthy tenants, and then also security systems being added. So they're going to be coming up with a five-year plan to meet their goals with HUD, and they have to, that's part of their accountability ahead. So that'll be happening. I'll hear more about that next month. That evening, I had my monthly meeting with CAP LP. The Finance Committee met first. Things are good cash flow right now. It's always a little unpredictable, once again, when state money comes in or federal money comes in to assist in these programs. But they're always in a good shape cash flow-wise with reserves to fill those inconsistencies so that the program moves forward in a positive way. There had been a federal audit on Head Start. The, the, there were no deficiencies at all, and in every category under the federal, federal audit, everyone was above the average or the necessary, necessary quality score. So kudos to CAP LP for the great work that they continue to do and grow. Then yesterday, I had Food Commission meeting again. We've been working on a strategic plan development for the organization for Food Partners in the North. And we had our third session with Dr. Jeff Schatz, who is mediating this, these conversations. And we've been working on, and we pretty well got in place a new mission statement, and now we're working on the values and the strategies. So our next strategy meeting will be on July 9th. So that completes my report. Oh, I do want to mention, for all those interests, just a reminder, on Thursday, June 27th, over at M State, we have our Longest Table Event from 68, 6 to 8. I certainly invite everybody here, civic leaders through the Dilworth, Moorhead area to attend. And if anybody has interest, we're expecting up to 300 people. And if you aren't aware of it or are still wanting to go, there will be room. And just Google Longest Table Event, Moorhead on, on Google, and there's a QR code if you can register. Otherwise, I would just suggest show up, 6 o'clock, M State. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. On, yesterday, I did attend the West Central Water by phone while I was traveling to another meeting later that day. And the only thing that I would, would add to Commissioner Gross's report was that on the, on the expansion of, or the potential expansion for the North Dakota side to deal with that dairy, they're also looking at the potential of updating and increasing their water treatment plant. And, you know, by doing that, it would also benefit then, or make it help to treat the amount of water, not only for that dairy, but would come across over to Minnesota. So, so that's another plus to that. I want to, then I, then we had our PRTF meeting. First off, before that, then, in, at Prairie Lakes, we had our Budget Committee meeting, and we went through that, and it, it looks like we'd probably be looking at about a 3% increase in our tipping fees that we're going to charge out of that facility. I think it would go from like $145 to $148, something like that. Is the proposal there to meet the financial obligations. I'm going to go into the weeds a little bit more in the PRTF than what Commissioner Gross did. I think in terms of transparency and where our conversations have been, I think it's important for, for the rest of the commissioners to hear some of the dialogue that we've had. And I'm, I'm, I know that Commissioner Mojo was out, not feeling well today, but I'm sure she'll, she's, she'll either be watching this or, or check in. But, you know, the, the planning on that right now, we've been dealing with that through our building committee. And in that, in the process of that, we've, we've had an awful lot of research done. There was some consideration for could it go in the family service center versus building new? And in that process, and listening to Steve from Solutions, I was, I was just listening and everything that he was talking about in terms of what would make that facility good, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, we already have that. And we have it on the first floor of the Regional Juvenile Center. And so we, you know, we've been having that discussion a little bit in regards to that. And so before, before we went too far into that, then I asked Commissioner Ebinger, who also serves with me on the facility for the Northwest Regional Juvenile Center, and we met with James and Josh. And we did that last week, one day last week, and, and we started talking about, could that concept work? And what it, what it boils down to is that, and James and Josh were 100% on board with this idea. And I think that was really important to have our, those people who run that facility. And so what the discussion is, is going to right now, and, and even in our meeting that we had yesterday, Stephen from Solutions, he, you know, he was thinking, you know, there might not even be much remodeling that would even need to be done in there. It's just, you know, so I think there's a scheduled tour that we're going to have going in there to look at that. But, you know, the, outside of that, the, where the plan was going and what Commissioner Gross talked about, where we're kind of putting a hold on, is that the, the design for a new PRTF and, and all of the needs that would do in a new building, we were looking at having to construct something that would be, just be under 20,000 square feet. And, and so what we're, you know, so the, we're thinking, well, okay, well, why not put that there? And then in terms of the non-secure, we still have, we'd just have to go someplace with the non-secure kids. And we, and, you know, we've heard from Rhonda, I've heard from Rhonda for years, that that non-secure, it's, it'd be much better off more in a residential setting than, than in that, in, you know, institutional type setting. And, you know, so now the, the idea was, well, could you, could we move non-secure and the transitional housing and build that to replace that? And of course, you know, there's, that wouldn't require all the hardened type of construction that would need to be done. And so I think there could be considerable savings in terms of construction costs for, for moving that. And Josh, who heads, and I, at some point, he can speak for himself, but he, he was very excited about that opportunity moving forward. And, and then Quinn Jagger was also at our meeting yesterday, and he was really excited to hear about, you know, these potential plans. And one other component, you know, we talked about, we have the non-secure piece, and then within that non-secure piece, we also have that transitional housing for, for our older males. And then we've also incorporated now what we plan on doing with detox in the old facility for creating a women's portion of that. In planning this, we could potentially put all of them together there, and that would then even help resolve some of our demands that Social Services and Public Health have in the Family Service Center. So there's a, a potential there for a lot of win-wins in this, in this process. And again, Commissioner Gross said it quite well, none of this is going to happen without But at least moving forward and coming up with a plan, and coming up a plan where I know Commissioner Krabinoff and Commissioner Mojo have been working with our state legislatures, Heather Keeler and, and others, on, on a funding program. And I think that this really could provide some really good opportunities to, you know, I think Representative Keeler has been, would be really interested in this new approach towards the non-secure people in a different type of setting that helps them out. So I, I know I've gone into the weeds a little bit on this, but that, I, I think it's a direction that, and so ultimately, what we, basically, what we did yesterday is, is we, at this point in time, they've gathered enough information on, on a design if we had to build a PRTF new. So we basically said, okay, Klein-McCarthy, can you tabulate your stuff and send a bill? And, you know, because I think we had a, I think we had, was 100,000, Steve, that we had set aside for?
That's correct, yep.
You know, so we basically said, okay, well, let's, let, you know, if this is a direction that looks very promising in terms of, of an idea, let's just not spend any more on that and get some more information and potentially change the resources to be looking at this potential option, which I, which I'm, I'm excited about. I, I think there's really, really good opportunities for all there.
If I may, to follow up on that, then, are, have, has a request, has some type of requests made, been made with Klein-McCarthy already? Are we needing to do a board action on that?
Well, and I, and again, I, I think, I think what we, what we, what we did do is, is we told Klein-McCarthy maybe just to, let's stop the meter on this, on this planning for this other new. And, and I, and I think ultimately, I don't know, I kind of want to put that. to Steve because I, I think ultimately, I think it's, that's why I'm putting this out there. Again, I think I touched on this at a previous committee meeting in terms of the thoughts of using that facility. But I, you know, I, I think we're, you know, we're at a point now where maybe we should be doing something to redirect Klein McCarthy to, you know, not, not only look at, and I, and I think we're waiting for that tour from Steve from, from, and once we get that, and then if we can determine what kind of modifications would need to be made in, in that facility for solutions, and then ultimately then have Klein McCarthy switch to what a new non-secure slash transitional housing would look like.
Right. And if, if I may just add, would we include, if we're thinking about this transition as it looks there, do we get DHS involved to, you know, I mean, they're the ones that kind of have to put some of the approval on some of this at the end of the day?
Yeah, that's correct. DHS and MDH would have involvement in that process. And so I think more of what Commissioner Campbell was wanting to do today was to keep this board up to date. There's many questions that we have to still ask. But I think, I think what, what the board's action here served this project extremely well from the standpoint of saying, what's the best path?
Right.
The thought process was, is we went in with maybe these two ideas. And I think that through Commissioner Campbell's comments and ideas, it brought forth another idea and which I do think has a lot of positive things, not only for the needs and the number of potential beds for PRTFs, but also to better serve a, a facility that is softer and more welcoming to some of the, some of the, some of those kids that are in that non-secure program.
Commissioner Kravenoff, I, you know, I, it's, there's an awful lot of legs to the stool that need to, you know, it, so we, so under the PRTF, that, that's governed by two different agencies, state agencies. And then what we have with the non-secure and transitional housing, that is also under, under DOC. So, so we have different agencies. And so we've been asking those questions, you know, what, you know, in terms of the DOC issues, I think what we're talking about there, I mean, James and Josh said DOC will lead, you know, that, from some of that transitional housing, they'll, they'll, they're fine with a regular house, you know. So, so there's really some opportunities there and, and...
Well, I appreciate your work.
But one of the, one of the, one of the critical components of that, in terms of the PRTF, you know, you, you're, you, you do have some, some of the clientele that's in there need to have the type of structure that we have there just because of their, their behavior. And...
Acuity.
Yeah. And whereas in the non-secure and the transitional housing, you don't need to have all of that. As a matter of fact, you want to try to get away from that in terms of getting them back out and ready for society. So there's some really good opportunities there. But I, you know, I didn't want to take up too much time, but at the same point in time, I just felt it's important to keep you informed on where we're going. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. 6:20, I also attended virtually the Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition meeting. Only thing I have to add to Commissioner Kravenoff's report is, we did get a chance to meet Megan Lundberg, who's a new employee at Moorhead Public, or Moorhead Police Department. She's going to be the Community Resource Officer. Basically, what her, what her position is, is to identify individuals within the community who were frequent callers or frequently called on because of mental health issues, and try and work with those people to get them the community resources they need, as opposed to police officers going out there and trying to deal with a mental health situation where somebody simply needs help and doesn't need any kind of enforcement action. Had a chance to talk to her last Friday at a, at a promotion and retirement event that Moorhead Police Department had. She's an extremely accomplished young woman, really excited about this position. I think she's going to do great things for the community. So welcome her aboard in our area here. Later that day, I was part of the non-secure discussion with Commissioner Larson, or Commissioner Larson, I'm sorry, I demoted you, County Administrator Larson, James O'Donnell, Josh Swanson, and Kevin Campbell. Great idea we've got coming from Commissioner Campbell. I think it's going to, as indicated, it's going to be a lot of work. We've got to figure out how to get money out of the legislature, which is not something that's easily accomplished these days. They're not funding things that they're already committed to. So hopefully we can, we can work through that. And then, of course, we're going to have three state agencies that all have input on how this is going to be done. So it's going to take some work, but I think it's going to be worth it for the kids that are involved in this and for the region to provide a few more beds for long-term psychiatric treatment for kids, which we are certainly short of. And later, further later on that day, I attended the Library Board Committee for the Lake Agassy Regional Library. We approved the final budget, and the letters went out. We received our letter for the cost to Clay County, and it's going to be a $6,000 and change increase for us. But overall, it was a, let me see, a 1.77% increase in the overall budget. So I think that is a prudent increase that just to keep up with salaries, they've done well keeping at that level. On Friday, the 21st, I was contacted by Emilio Lambo with the Association of Minnesota County. He's the coordinator for the Public Safety Committee. We have got a Safe and Secure Courts grant funding that's out there, and he needed somebody to review the grants from AMC. They've asked to have a couple commissioners. He asked if I would do it, and I told him I'd be happy to do it. There's going to be county attorneys, representatives from the sheriff's office, and representatives from the courts also on this review committee. But it is good that we've got an ongoing resources to keep our courts safe. There certainly is a lot of issues out there that need to be, we need to be aware of. And that completes my reports. Steve, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 20th, I had a department head evaluation. I also participated MCC JPA prep meeting leading up to our meeting this Thursday. We had property acquisition updates. We talked about haying agreement and a contracting action that will be on this week's agenda. On the 20th, I also participated in the meeting that's been addressed in regards to non-secure detention programming. On the 21st, I met with Dan Molly, Derek Lapointe, got some updates on the Moorhead Center Mall project, talked about collaboration with the Police Department and Sheriff's Department. Again, they wanted to extend their thank you in working and allowing our Sheriff's Department to help in some of their coverages. We again talked about coordinating a legislative update priorities, as we attempted to do last year, to, to work more collaboratively that way. On the 24th, participated in the West Central Regional Water District. That's been well-covered. Just of note, so far through the, through the district formation, we've spent roughly $126,000 of the $300,000 that the three counties have committed. Yesterday also had, we're in budget season, so we had the pre-budget meeting for Human Resources, Planning, Zoning, GIS, and Communications. As you may recall, last week I had mentioned that Rhonda Porter and Quinn were going to be here this week to do the Social Service budget. And while Rhonda's last day of official full-time work is on Friday, she's indicated that she'll come here next Tuesday to, to provide, provide that budget. And so we'll have an opportunity to wish her well at that time. Let's see, participated in the PRTF design meeting that has been addressed. Also, just a couple notes, we will have a county picnic here today with 1:30 to 1:00 for our employees' appreciation for the great work that they do. Also, we'll be having a closing on Thursday on the property here on, on north, northwest on campus. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, you got anything for us?
No, thanks, Sarah.
Sarah, this is your last crack. You got anything for us? We want to extend our gratitude. You've done a great job. And not just here, we get reports back, and you are stepping up everywhere you need it, and we're grateful for that.
Something tells me this won't be the last time we see her.
All right.
Great job, Sarah.
I will adjourn.